And then you're gonna have school board meetings? Believe me, start wanting the school board meetings, you're gonna get knocked there. Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay. Motion passes.
I want to appoint a township secretary and township right-to-know officer. Make a motion to appoint Lisa Delitis as the 2016 Township Secretary and Township Office Right-to-Know Officer at $16.97 per hour.
Second one.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
I have a question. Lisa, as far as the minutes going forward, I noticed like you had the November workshop minutes ready for the main South Randi One meeting. You have those minutes on the agenda to be approved, but then the following meeting you had September's minutes. Like what's your policy with minutes? Like do you go in order or do you pull them out?
I've set that policy and I've had her get more up-to-date on the current ones she had gotten behind and she had been.
Okay, alright.
So, we're trying to get the backlogged ones, but considering the importance and the relevance of the meetings and the amount of residents who call requesting information regarding those meetings, I had her work on things that were more relevant.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
What was the hourly rate?
$16.97. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye, sorry. Sorry, Lisa.
I make...
Five?
Yeah, all five. I make a motion to appoint Franchi Parni Martin as a 2016 Township Treasurer and Office Manager at a yearly salary of $51,504.12.
Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, five, nothing. I make a motion to appoint Catherine Archibald as a 2016 Part-Time Administrative Assistant at the yearly salary, at the, what's that, a yearly salary?
Hourly.
At the hourly salary of $15.45 per hour.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Could you clarify parts a lot, please? Is there a total number of hours per year anticipated for?
Thirty-two hours a week.
Thirty-two hours until we... Any other comments or questions? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Passes, five. I make a motion to approve the October 13, 2015 Board of Supervisors Workshop Minutes as presented.
Second.
Comments or questions?
Steve, was that on the minutes?
Yes, this one.
Octobers?
Yes, October, October 13th.
I wanna, I wanna have that looked at a little further as far as the quote in that letter.
Which part?
Uh, in the quote on the discussion, number one, John Good for Ball Mahiadine Fellowship.
Which book? Which quote, where?
Uh, right in the middle, quotation mark stated, "The work that Mr. Pompo did was apparently requested by Dennis Crook, who had no authority to act on behalf of the Ball Mahiadine Fellowship." I think I've seen that letter. I question that. And suspect he requested the information from Mr. Pompo for his own personal use as a member of the Planning Commission. I think that letter, I don't think it reflects that. I'd like that looked into further.
Was that, was that taken right from the?
I think it was just quoting directly the letter that was, that was sent in by John Good.
If I remember, you read that. So that's exactly what was on the letter?
That was, yeah, it was quoted from the letter. It was not answered.
The letter wasn't answered?
The letter wasn't answered?
Mm-hmm.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, we can, yeah, we can go back over and make sure that's exactly what was written.
That was something I requested from the board two or three meetings in a row.
How about if we changed it to which alleged, alleged versus which stated? I mean, that should really be said anyway, which alleged, you know? Cause the statement was read aloud, I mean, it's just, you know, it's a recording of what was stated at the meeting. I'm not sure why, if you're glad seeing stuff like that too, Dennis, where they don't really go into detail and that one seems to be pulled out, but.
Yeah.
We can use the word alleged if you want.
Well, I'm also questioning why it's my, my name in there instead of the Planning Commission. I mean, I did send the request. I mean, I don't have a account from the East Fallow Field, so yes, I did use my own personal one, which I have used for a number of times.
Lisa, why'd you feel like that going into detail like that part? I mean, you're the secretary, so it's really, I'm looking for possible feedback on you, like why? What?
Um, it's fine, it's time to read it out for everybody to hear at a public meeting.
I mean, it is the secretary's minutes of how she's recorded the meeting. I mean, would alleged help versus stated?
Well, that's, I guess the opinion of the people that were talking at that meeting. I wasn't present at that meeting, so, you know. I think this is brought up for political reasons more than anything. I am a member of the Ball Mahiadine Fellowship. I'm not on the board to, to put any of my own personal recommendations for. It comes from seven people, not from me individually.
Right.
And if the seven people happen to agree with, with or without my opinion, that's up to, you know, that's up to them, not me. I'm not there for any particular agenda. And I don't have any particular bias to one side of this argument or the other, to tell you the truth.
Yeah. The problem is, is the minutes are just being recorded, what, it's just a recording of what's been stated at that meeting. I mean, the office manager read that letter aloud and then the secretary, I mean, this is recorded.
Yeah. This is what goes into public records, though. It almost sounds like that's the fact.
It's just because it was quoted and Mr. Crook, like we have summarized other people's things before and not directly quoted.
I mean, I, from, as far as my concern or my vote, Lisa, it really falls back onto you if you feel as a township secretary that needed to be. I mean, it's, I, it's just a letter that was read aloud, you know, I don't, I understand Mr. Crook, um, Mr. Crook's point, I mean, you have a separate view. Do you feel like that can be?
I think summarize it if, you know, that means.
Take the quote out, I guess, if that's the concern. Um, it is what was read, so I mean, it's just a matter of if it's in the minutes or not, in the published minutes versus it's still on tape, so. Would you rather that whole thing be summarized differently?
Yes, I would.
Is that what you're asking for?
Prefer that.
Any concerns from anybody on that?
No.
Any other comments or questions? I think you had one. All those in favor with the amendments?
Aye.
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 Passes, five. Reopen the 2016 budget? Do you want to make that motion again?
Thanks, man. So number 11 is to reopen the 2016 budget. Chairman's passed it down. Carol, this is on the agenda really for, for any new supervisor coming on because you're basically working with a budget that was voted on just before you came on the board. And whether you agree with it or not, by law, you know, you have it to your ability to, you know, it's really been on the agenda for a supervisor that's new on the board. I mean, obviously other supervisors could work with you, but it's, how do you feel? Would you like that budget? Would you like to make that motion? I can make the motion for you. Alright, I make a motion to reopen the 2016 budget, 11 dash 10 dash 15 baseline with the 1.25 mil tax dash updated December. So, interesting motion, hold on a second. Is there a second on that motion or? Okay, so motions on the floor. I have some thoughts, is there any questions or from the audience?
Yeah, Ken Hanson, Ivy Lane, Grand River Village. Can you, can you please explain why you want it opened again? I mean, you were at all the meetings that we had, that I attended over at South Randi One. Just, excuse me, curious why you want it opened again?
No comment.
So, you have no clue, man?
I just thought I, I, I want the tax.
Can you speak up?
Yeah, we can. I just want the tax in the first place, that's why I said.
Is there any ideas on where the money should come from? You don't have any ideas?
I guess it would have to be cut.
Cuts him what, though? Do you have any ideas on what you'd like to cut? Because I mean, as, as residents, I mean, or a portion of the residents here, you know, I mean, it would be nice to know what you think should be cut. I know, like Chris, like Ed said, this has to go out for 45 days and, you know, all the other meetings are being held, but it seemed like, you know, the board, except for you, spent hours poring over this and coming up with one budget and two budgets and alternates. It just seems like if you want to come in and make a motion to change something, there should be a reason and some kind of logic behind that reason.
That's right. I have a white, please.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on the gentleman's comments. I thought they were very good, but in reference to the budget, I happen to know, and some of you were at the last meeting, we had a telephone, and first it didn't go in favor of the budget. And having some conversation and deductions that we didn't have before, alright, and some increases for the fire companies, which was, well, you know, taken, but at the same time, there was some deduction that at one time, I know two supervisors up there said there's no, no fat in the budget, but all of a sudden, when the budget didn't go in favor of a, of a budget, it came down with getting ready the township manager, which is quite a bit of money. There's some other items that was cut down and Mr. Toth changed his vote in favor of the budget. I would say, and to be the courtesy, you know, being one of the residents of the township, and I agree, and I, like I said before, you put in, I've been here every meeting, and I look around here, and I'm glad more people are coming out to the meetings, but a lot of those people had not been at the budget meetings. And I feel that all the board should review the budget and see if there is any more cuts to be made. It's only fair for all residents, and I can only speak for one resident myself, being on social security and on a set income. And like I said earlier, there's a lot of people that can come out this cold weather, there's the sun majority, and evidently the elections has showed it in the last couple of elections, the people that was for increases and the candidates were for not for increases. So we already know what you run on, but sometimes when you do get into office, there is some changes you have to make, and that's something I would hope this board would review. I don't think it's a big thing, and I didn't reference the budget. I would want to have the courtesy to all the board members to have a chance to go over it, and that's all five of you. Thank you.
Let me just, I just want to address the budget. I mean, Mr. Rhodes, you did make mention that two supervisors said there was nowhere to cut in the budget. We, I will say this, I mean, obviously you had a split board with two supervisors proposing, championing a two-mil increase and then three supervisors who were against any kind of increase in mils. So we compromised, and I think we made a pretty good compromise, to be honest with you. I would say that, you know, Steve and I came down from where we were and Evan Charles came up from where they were, and ultimately Mark was the one who passed the deciding vote. So for me, the 1.25 increase, I believe is something that everybody can live with. You're not looking at any cuts at all for any township employees, which is probably the most important part of that budget. And to reopen it unless there is, and Carol, you know, I know you ran on a campaign of not being in favor of the tax, but you didn't pass this tax, we did. So if you guys want to pin the blame on me for passing the tax, or Steve, go right ahead, but there's no reason to reopen this right now. What we should do is move forward with the budget. We voted on the 30th and look towards the budget for next year to see where we can improve it. That's not.
There any one comment I would like to make, Chairman? It's in reference, there is other areas, and one of the biggest areas is insurance. That's one of the biggest areas that you should be looking at, and also the pension, alright? Those two items are very expensive.
Cut pensions? We're supposed to cut pensions.
So insurance, we have been looking over insurance in the past, and that's something that you should look over again. You have quite a few employees, union and non-union, and insurance takes up a lot of your costs, not just their hourly rate, it's the insurance that you have for the employees. And that's something, not to take away any insurance on an employee, but there's so many competition out there in reference to insurance, and then, and some of the folks are involved in banking, so it's same thing in banking. You go to the best bank, that gives you the best interest, and that, I would, went to Board of Supervisors, go look at the insurance. Alright, thank you.
Who's, whose pension should we cut, Mike?
Pardon?
Whose pension should we cut? You may mention the pensions.
You reviewed the pension. You had not reviewed the pension for any of the employees.
Review?
You got some, Mr., you know, I'm not going to get in, I'm speaking to the chairman in reference to the pension. You got a lot of employees who are getting up in age, and they're, they're going to be calling in for their pension, and that's something you have to look at, just like the state of Pennsylvania, that's one of the big, powerful things for Pennsylvania.
What do you suggest?
Thank you.
Do you have, do you have a suggestion on how to?
I'm not, I'm not.
No? Okay.
I mean, you can go back and court all night, but get the meeting going.
Thanks, sir. Mrs. Colp, congratulations.
Thank you.
Hopefully, hopefully this doesn't change. It looks like it's going to go that way, but I have a question for Mrs. Colp. You said that there needs to be cuts. Where would those cuts come from, first one? I believe you already answered it and said you didn't know. If you could just clarify that.
Well, I think we open the budget and look at where we could cut further.
Okay. Okay, well, there's only, the majority of it are two spots. We all know that here. It's the police department and the roads. What is your opinion on diminishing the current levels of the police department?
I'm fine with the police department as it is.
You're, you're fine with keeping the current levels? Okay. How about increasing it? I believe through my own personal knowledge as a police officer, knowing an officer in the township, that there's a vacancy of a full-time position right now. What is your opinion on filling that current vacancy?
Put a part-time person in there instead of the full-time?
So that would be cutting, that would be cutting the police department?
But it wouldn't take anybody's job, just have a part-time person.
Thank you for answering my question, ma'am. You've been very, very insightful this evening.
Oh, thank you.
Is there anybody else who's interested in the full job? Mr. Scott was next, and then you circled. Just a second. Yeah?
Like, run it up.
Go ahead, Chair.
In reference to the vote at the last meeting, and in reference to Mr. Toth, I believe his final comment was that he, because he ran on a no real estate tax, and he said that he hoped that the budget would be opened again. That's what he said. And also throughout that meeting, I was totally confused as to what the budget figures were. I think the board had one set of papers, the audience had another, and how do I know what Mark Toth had? So, I'm very pleased that this would be opened again. It would give the new board member time to communicate, and hopefully this board will communicate with the people in the township, our workers, and see where we can cut, because not only I, but my neighbors, many people I've run into even this afternoon, we cannot afford a real estate tax. We also know darn well, we're going to be socked with a huge real estate tax on the school district, and it'll, the impact upon senior citizens is just too much. We cannot afford to be taxed on our homes. I hope that, so I'm grateful, Carol, that you will open it and get educated and communicate with the township employees to just see what we can do. So I thank you. Bye.
If I could talk louder, you need the mic? You're, okay. Thank you, thank you, Chairman. I just want to make a couple of points about the budget. I missed a couple of the budget meetings, but I think it's important, one, to answer these questions if you're going to reopen the budget, is one, how much money do we have in reserve or any day fund? I mean, I've sat in other townships, and they have a couple million dollars in the bank, and they're still doing a tax increase, because they look, they project over the coming years. I mean, East Bradford, they got money coming out of their ears, but they reevaluate it and they, they, East Vincent just did a tax increase, and they're not hurting for money. They have money coming in from some of the facilities that sit in their borders. I think it's, I think, I think it'd be fiscally irresponsible not to think ahead and put a tax in place now. There's 73 municipalities in Chester County, maybe three or four are at zero mileage. We've been living on borrowed time on this budget. I watched meetings in the past, we couldn't afford to get our backhoe fixed, you know, backhoe, you know, little police, and to put police on part-time, we got a lot of part-time police, you can't split it. You can't have it both ways. You can't have a municipality with a free ride on local taxes and then expect services like paved roads, fixed bridges, police protection, fire protection? How many times have I come to this meeting and the, and the fire and ambulance guys have to come here and do their, their monthly bank for the money? I mean, they have to respond 100% of the time. I mean, I've, I've had the ambulance come to my house, I'm sure other people have too. If we're going to go down this road of complaining about the budget and people being on fixed income, I understand the fixed income. We got a lot of wealthy people in this township, too, that can more than afford to pay their fair share. So I strongly urge you to look ahead and not be short-sighted, and put a budget in place with a local tax that makes sense and is appropriate for our community in Chester County. Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
Again, Mrs. Colp, welcome to the board, and obviously as you have found out, you're in hot seat, and I, I'm appalled that your answer was, "I don't know," and I really feel bad for you that you're now going to be really dug into. You should have been prepared to answer that question. So obviously you're, you're regretting your, your comments here. As, as some of the other board members said, you didn't put this budget in place. You'd like to take the heat for it, the budget. Find ways in 2016 and 2017 for what you want to do. I strongly recommend that you rescind your motion. Find ways to save money in 2016. Look at the budget. Just because it's there online doesn't mean you have to spend every single penny. You can shop your insurance throughout your, your year. You just are saving $5 an hour for a attorney, which I think was ludicrous to do that, but obviously, Mr. Porter, if you know something internally, absolutely, that's why you five are charged to run this organization. Be fiscal responsible. But Mrs. Colp, I really would like you to rescind your motion. Go with the 2016 budget, let it happen, look what you can do for 2017. Thank you.
No, I'm sure the budget.
Just one more quick, Joe Dekman, 3:30 Wilmington Road, the Assistant Fire Chief now, I'm not the Fire Chief anymore, and I'm just going to build a little bit on what this gentleman hears.
Who's the Fire Chief now?
Mike McWilliams is now the Fire Chief, yes. Historically, I think we've learned over the past couple of months that this township possibly made a mistake, or whatever you want to call it, when the sale of land from the King Ranch went to the Brandi One Conservancy, back to the private owners that have it now. There was a lot of money that we came upon and we then quit a property tax, which we should have kept. Had we kept that, we would not be having this discussion right now. To me, we're living paycheck to paycheck, which is kind of what this gentleman said, and I think that's a bad position to be in, so I would, I would also hope that we reconsider this, and if we get a little buffer on money and we move forward, next year we can drop it back in the mileage. I'm all for you. Thank you.
And to answer the one question, we have around $300,000 in reserves at this board.
So you are living paycheck to paycheck?
Yes. It's my opinion, yes.
Can I get the opinion from the rest of the board on that? Does everyone on the board agree that we're living paycheck to paycheck?
Not, if I can speak for a second, there's some comments here that I agree with and some I don't. Do I live, believe at this particular time with the tax effect of living paycheck to paycheck? Of course not. You know, there's some extra money now that's in the budget. Do I believe reopening the budget that I can solve the shortfall? No. The shortfall is too large that not enough cuts unless I go into personnel will I ever be able to solve. It's a quite large hole, 400, 5,000 if I'm correct, and it's not one that I can solve by reopening the budget. And to Joe's point, it would only force me, even if I was able to save a half a mil, it would force me to rescind on my way to a one-taxure, because now I would be responsible for that tax. Then you see, obviously the previous budget, I would see a question right now, would no longer exist, and then there'd be a budget before the people, a township passed. I agree with the statement that was stated by Mr. Scott, and that's my opinion here. Even though I, you know, as far as my vote, the money's there, doesn't mean that I'm going to spend it necessarily to the T that it's been placed for. We might discover as a board as we go through that we have money needed for something else or emergencies, but at least that money is there to be navigated, and it doesn't have to be used to a T that it was pitched to the board. It is the employees' budget, it was proposed by the, by the department heads, and it was pitched to the board. In my opinion, this is not a budget that necessarily that the supervisors had too much say in, because we basically had put it out to the department heads and what they would want. And we really came down to a short period of time to pass a budget without really having any talks amongst ourselves about it. So I do think that there can be some oversight within this budget, but I don't believe that I will, I will vote to reopen it, only because, and I know some of you out there that don't want a tax, I literally cannot solve this problem without cutting it to personnel, and that's the problem for me. There's not enough that I can cut in different departments, so what I guarantee you is I will save you and not spend the money. I will look over it every which way in my vote for things that come before this board and not vote for that. And hopefully at the end of the year, we'll have a surplus where we have additional money throughout the year that could be used for different emergencies, and that's the best that I can do within this budget, so.
Did you say you weren't going to vote to reopen it?
I'm just, I put it on the floor for Carol as a courtesy. Mark did ask for that. As far as myself, I'm, you know, I'm giving a foreshadowing a little bit of how I'm going to vote. I cannot solve the problem without being the one that's taxing myself.
So we have motion on the floor.
So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any more questions? Mrs. Scott?
I would request that you review with the staff so that we will not...